Needs to be masked if you're going to be in the room. Please put your mask over your mouth and your nose, we will wait for you. Ma'am, could you bring your mask up please? For those people who have not yet masked, please mask. Ma'am, could you please put on your mask? Yes. Thank you. Okay Julie, can you go ahead?
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Christopher Espinoza. Jenny Hagstrom.
Here.
Terry Pavisage.
Here.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Here.
Nancy Cupka.
Here, we have a quorum, let's stand for the pledge.
Excuse me, Jay Toladino?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here.
Thank you.
Sorry Jay, we have a quorum, let's stand for the pledge.
All right, good evening everyone, thank you for coming out this evening. We start this evening with recognition of the board. Today is School Board Member Appreciation Day in Illinois. And I'd like to recognize our volunteer board for all of their effort and work that it takes to be a school board member. It's a lot of time here with us, a lot of time preparing for board meetings. And our board is especially good at attending professional development and improving their skills. As a result of that, our board was recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards for board governance. And this adds to our growing list of recognition for that award. And each board member will be awarded a pin for the recognition, which I'll hand out to board members later tonight. We also have recognition of board member Vazquez-Drexler for, let's see, master board member for this year. So thank you so much for your service, all board members. And then our partners on the Master Facility Plan, White &amp; Company, are here to recognize the board as well.
Thank you so much for having us out this evening. On behalf of White &amp; Company, we'd just like to thank the Board of Education, the administration, for all of your support through the master facility planning projects at both North and South High School. As a community member and graduate of South High, I am very deeply honored to be here and to be a part of these projects. So thank you very much for your support.
I can say as well, as a graduate of South and both parents went to North, this has been a privilege that maybe is the best in my career. And it shows that when you worry about building and not about blaming, you can save about a year and you can save about 20 percent. That couldn't have been done without the leadership of this board. And we are eternally grateful, thank you very much. And if we're allowed, we have a little thing we'd like to give you.
So we'd like to present a, to Hank and the board. Yeah, absolutely, well I just want to make sure everyone can hear us. It's a picture of both North and South, the final photography of each of the buildings, with a collage of the finished spaces.
Thank you.
I think we'd be remiss without acknowledging what a wonderful job you guys did. Our spaces are fabulous. Thank you so much. And I would also like to recognize Dr. Thiele's leadership in this, on behalf of the board. Thank you all. Okay, our first action tonight is approval of minutes for the October 18th, 2021 Business Meeting, the November 1st, 2021 Workshop Meeting, and the November 1st, 2021 Closed Meeting. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Joanna and Chris. Joanna and Chris.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavisage.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye, the minutes are approved. Before we go into the reception of visitors, do you have something you want to say, Dr. Thiele?
No, I have a statement for the second.
For the second, okay. So the meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. The second reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments are going to be limited to three minutes to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. Individuals needing more time should submit their thoughts in writing to the Board Secretary, Mrs. Nydak. Visitors addressing the board need to submit a comment slip to the Board Secretary and will be invited to the microphone. Prior to addressing the board, audience members should state their full name. The proceedings are being taped-recorded for the purpose of producing accurate meeting minutes and they are being streamed. I reserve the right to modify those protocols if circumstances warrant. And we really do appreciate your observation of these protocols. We're just going to go through the slips for a moment.
Did you go through the guidelines?
Yeah.
Gina, if you could advance to the next slide. One more for me. All right, the first reception of visitors, as Dr. Cupka mentioned, is for items that are action items this evening. Action items this evening include the consent agenda items that are listed and the other action items there, which are approval of the proposed bell schedule, approval of the calendar year insurance premiums, the resolution to prevent sexual harassment, and the second reading and approval of policies as well. We have three comment slips for those items. The first person I'd like to invite forward is Carol Davis. Gina, if you could advance the slide once she starts speaking. Nope, you've got to go back.
Good evening, I'm Carol Davis and I moved to the district about four years ago. My kids attended school in Cook and Lake Counties and they are now grown. And I am here to speak in favor of the proposed bell schedule. Though my kids are grown and attended high school in Lake County, they both experienced four years of rigorous and intense block scheduling. I can speak to both the very real benefits and the very real detriments of block scheduling. They also endured procedural changes regarding passing times between classes and lunch periods. And that is why my ears perk up at the mention of bells and schedules. I think we can all agree that little things can have a big impact when it comes to education. Because of my experience with block scheduling, I identify with the concerns of parents who are worried about block scheduling. While block scheduling has real advantages, mainly that students and teachers have more time for in-depth instructions. Full block scheduling, something this board is not considering, also has serious drawbacks for many students, particularly those that are in vocational programs, like one of my own children was. But that's another story for another time. As stated previously, a longer instructional period can have advantages, especially in subjects like music, math, and science. And block scheduling provides this. It was pleasing to see a hybrid schedule. How I wish my children's high school had come up with that. Having block scheduling limited to one subject once a week is probably the optimal approach for a public high school that must accommodate numerous academic needs and learning styles. The approach that the board and the staff have taken is holistic and well thought out. When you look through the documentation that accompanies the proposed schedule, it is evident that both the board and the faculty have done a thorough job of researching and acknowledging issues and concerns, including the reality of a split lunch that block scheduling creates. But with the proposed schedule, it will only be on two days. Having one day a week to dig deep into a subject will have a big payoff for the students. As stated earlier, little changes can have big impact. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Wande D. I think the last name is D. Having a hard time making it out?
Somebody from Westmont?
Looking for, it looks like the first initial is M and then it looks like the last name might be D, lives in Westmont? Having a hard time reading the name here. The subject says "education", but check first reception of visitors.
First initial M, last name D.
All right, we'll move to the next one and the next person up is Jim Devitt. I'm sorry? Second reception?
McBrowdy maybe? McBrowdy? McBrowdy or McBrowdey?
It's not an action item? Your item an action item or no? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Returned in-person learning?
All right, Gina, if you'll advance the slides there. So really, there's been no change in guidelines from the state for returned in-person learning. At each board meeting, we've updated the board and the public on the number of close contacts and positive cases that have come our way. Each month, we update the board on the number of staff positive cases. As those numbers have been very small, we've been reporting data across the district and across all staff so that there's not a chance of identifying who those individuals are. As you can see, we've remained pretty consistent since this, well, this is about a month's worth of data I gave you there. I think the range for positive students has been between one and five a week. And the range for close contacts, I think our highest number in a week was 23 and I think our lowest was one or two. So it's been a pretty consistent range though throughout the whole year. Any questions on that? All right, Gina, if you could advance. The next topic is the proposed bell schedule. This is just an overview of kind of the flow of the week. Just a reminder for the board that tonight, this is an action item and what we're asking is the board to authorize the prototype schedule as it's structured. And in doing so, is authorizing the administration and staff to invest the hours into it that it's going to take for the solve fours and the additional communications throughout the rest of the year. As this is a time-intensive project, we want to make sure that the board is approving of us continuing to advance our time and effort in this as the school year proceeds. If, go to the next slide Gina. We sent out information to staff, to students, to families about many details around the proposed hybrid block and then asked for feedback on this. We use that feedback to go against all of our known issues that we're already starting to work on and solve for and to identify some concerns and misconceptions. In a moment Gina's going to share some of those with you and go through basically some answers to some of those concerns as well, as well as identifying some of the work that we have to do for the rest of the year. In the end, we believe that this is the right direction to go for our students as it will provide both the instructional opportunities that we need but will allow us to have each student's time more directly allocated to where their most essential points of need are or the areas that they want to advance the most in. So we've gone back to the benefits many times over the last several months, so I'm not going to read those through to the board. But I'm going to turn it over to Gina now to discuss some of the survey misconceptions and clarifications.
Thank you, Dr. Thiele. As we comb through the survey responses, we identified several misconceptions or items that we wanted to clarify. The first one is that many people commented on how a two-day block will lead to a four-day block. We are not recommending a four-day block. In fact, we are advocating for a two-day block. We are not considering a four-day block at this time. In addition, concerns were raised about supervision of students before school. We currently have supervision of students before school and we will continue to provide supervision. We absolutely have to supervise our students in the morning and throughout the day. There were a few concerns about whether or not there'd be a sufficient period of time to conduct IEP meetings. On the eight-period days, we are anticipating that the periods will only be a few minutes shorter. In fact, the block days will be longer. So we do not feel that it will adversely impact IEP meetings. There were some questions about counseling and student support services and how their curriculum could be cut. Currently, many of those lessons occur during class, so during an English class or during a social studies class. In fact, this schedule allows us the opportunity to incorporate that curriculum into our access period, which will be on the block days, and our resource periods that also will be on the block days. So we do not anticipate needing to cut our C-triple-S curriculum. Some concerns were raised about split lunches. We certainly know that a split lunch is not ideal for some classes and we will definitely take that into consideration as we're planning the schedule. Concerns were raised about professional development time and how professional development would be structured. That is one of our solve fours. In fact, we have a professional development committee that we are forming to work on it. However, professional development will occur on the block days during periods four, five, and six because teachers have a lunch period that falls either fourth, fifth, or sixth period. In addition, concerns were raised about course teams and time. We have a committee forming to consider how best to support our teachers, our teams, our departments, on our common experience work. So that committee will be working with that. The hybrid block schedule will negatively impact certain programs. There were specific comments to our Cooperative Work Training Course, TCD, our Child Development Lab. And we are working with different departments to consider how they may be impacted and to resolve any potential issue arise. Another concern that was raised was about the schedule being challenging for some students with executive functioning, that they may not be successful under this model. And although the schedules appears to be complex and we're looking at many different possibilities, each student will have an established weekly schedule and we will be preparing each student on how best to navigate that schedule. Dr. Thiele mentioned some of the solve fours and we have created committees to work on these. Our access and resource period committee will work on structures and processes as well as some of those issues that came up about, for example, the counseling and student support services curriculum. That will all be worked through through that committee, which will begin meeting, we plan to begin meeting next month. Part-time and traveling teacher schedules, our opposite lunch classes, athletics and activities, professional development, and then course team time. So we are forming these committees that will be composed of administrators and teachers. And as I said earlier, our access and resource period planning committee is being formed and will meet soon. Some of the things that we're working on in that committee or we're planning to work on is structure and building more structure in it at the beginning of the year and skill building. We're also working on how to help students to transition and select help, self-selected help for students in areas that they may need. We're also working on what are the expectations during that time? Can we get guest speakers in from different groups like colleges and trades and local businesses? How best to prepare our students for post-secondary? Guest speakers in all different areas and professions as well. And then there are several yearly events that we participate in now that can be built into either the access period or that resource period. Many different recognitions and celebrations that occur throughout the year and then other areas will be built in as well.
So it's a common misconception with the access and resource period because we want to get the board's approval before we spend staff time planning for each and every one of those days throughout the year, is that it's going to be totally unstructured time and that's not the case. You know, there'll be a lot more structure at the beginning of the year. We teach students the skills of how to manage that one access period once a week where they're going to teachers and getting help or teachers are scheduling them into space. But we need to build those skills at the beginning of the year so that students are doing that appropriately. And then have supports there for when students don't use that time appropriately. But then the other access and resource periods will have programming scheduled into them throughout the year. So one of those access periods will be totally scheduled every week of the year. And then half of the resource period will be scheduled with programming as well. So we understand the concern of a full 78 minutes of no structure would be difficult for some, if not many, high school students to manage. That's why, you know, we'll have alternating programming in that space. So some of that time will be structured and some of that time will be there for students to either work on their own or get help from our resource centers during that back half of that time. So as the year goes on, you know, we're right here at finalizing the version, the first version, and then seeking approval. And then throughout the rest of the year, we're going to work on those solve fours and almost at every board meeting, just as we did with the Master Facility Plan, just as we're doing with strategic planning. Any big change that we make, we keep the board up to date as to the progress that we're making. We're trying to do this in a very transparent and open fashion so that people are aware of, they get to see the plane as it's built, right? In many school districts that have gone through this change, the whole plan is released in the spring of the year before the next fall when it's implemented. And we know that that would cause a lot of concerns because it just shows up out of nowhere. So part of the idea of planning and building this way is that over the course of the year, the community gets to learn about it in manageable chunks, right? This is a lot for anybody to take in. We know there's a lot of questions and concerns. So we want to work over the whole course of the year, kind of just, here's the next thing, get people's feedback, be able to respond to that, make adaptations in the plan as students and families. plan as students and families and staff raise concerns so that we have the best possible plan in place for next fall. The first group that will work is the spot where the biggest concerns are, the new thing with the access periods and resource periods. That committee begins working, I think, very soon. We're forming that committee now and then I think right after Thanksgiving, that group starts working. So, as soon as we have like a temper, a tentative schedule together and then we put together rules and processes and all of those, those will all be coming to the board over the course of the year and to the public so that everybody can see how that's all coming together well in advance. And then towards the end of the year, we'll give a comprehensive overview of what next fall will look like. So, I think questions are next from the board. Any board member questions on what we've presented up to this point?
Do you, do you have a sense of how many alternate bell days there are right now?
Right now? I, I didn't go through and count them. We did look at how many weeks have an alternate bell schedule in it and it's about half of the weeks in the year have some kind of alternative schedule in them. So, it's very, like today was a Monday late start schedule, which is a different schedule that also had PBIS inside of it. So, today was an alternate schedule. So, throughout the entire school year, our students are navigating through either calendar changes based on holidays or events or schedule changes based on things like testing and PBIS and PEP assemblies and any number of things. So, it's very common for students and staff to have to manage an alternative schedule at various points throughout the week and the year.
And how long are the access periods?
Currently, we're looking at a 30-minute access period. Of course, once that committee gets in and starts working and putting in actual ideas and lessons, that might shorten up a little bit, it might extend. We also might play with the passing periods in there a little bit. So, there's, there's some different, still moving pieces that might flex as we move along and if we're going to make a recommendation to change that, we'll, we'll come back to the board with that information.
We've received some, some pretty thoughtful emails on both, both supporting and, and concerns about the block schedule. Obviously, the solve fours is a little bit of a concern, right? What's our confidence that we can do it? Although intuitively, we know that we're not reinventing the wheel here. And so, other schools have, have figured out these solve fours and we certainly will and I know we have confidence to do that. It's important that people have time to plan ahead of time for this. And so, I, I really like this really long process we've been going through to get to that point. I empathize with some of the, some of the concerns we've heard about wanting to, hey, just have one more year of keep things the same. But in, in fact, this, I think the schedule, there's three days a week that are the same and it's just those two days that there's a little bit of a difference. And, and I think that if we really believe that this is better, right, that it doesn't make sense for us to wait. And I understand, you know, people have some apprehension over change, but I think we've got the capability here to do this the right way and hopefully over the, you know, between now and next fall, we can continue to build that trust with people as they better understand what this involves. Something else I wanted to say, then I forgot. Oh, what, what do you, how do you, how do you speak to, so we've gotten some emails about some concern over actually a reduction in instructional time. Why do you respond to that?
Yeah, so, there's a couple of ways of looking at it. Actual minutes, we have to remember when we look at this model that the access periods are not lost minutes. The idea is that we build to a spot where during that access period time, that it's a restructuring of the minutes. So, students are moving to the teachers where they need to get help at that time or we're moving them there, right? But in some way, it's that time is restructured. So, right now, there's a time in each day where a student is successful in a certain course and they're spending more time in that class than they probably need to because they're doing just fine, right? But if they could get a little more help from this other class during the day, they'd much rather have that time there where they're not as successful or somewhere where they're just like pushing way ahead. So, what this allows us to do is to individualize and personalize the educational experience for kids, which is the direction that education is moving in so that their time is more spent where it's needed, kid by kid, rather than us just assuming every kid needs the same amount of time in every class each week across the board, right? And of course, there's procedures and mechanics and making sure that students are ready for that change and that staff are and we'll front-load that at the beginning of the year. So, access periods at the beginning of the year are going to look at, look at building a lot of those skills that students are going to need to be successful in this new model. And then eventually, we'll start transitioning to where students are either being assigned or are choosing as to which teachers that they need to go see and, and work further.
Thank you.
You know, I wanted to build on something. Did, did anybody else want to say something before I go in? I wanted to build on something Mike said. You know, I continue to struggle with this and I know that professional development are in the solve fours, but we have heard from a lot of the community members, as Mike said, on both sides of this. And I guess my question is about the timeline and would it be advantageous to go forward with this but try, but maybe give another year, give you a year and a half to develop it versus half of a year? Give those juniors that last year of a more normal schedule? What are the disadvantages of doing that?
So, first of all, I, I think that this schedule offers us the, the time, flexibility and space to meet students' needs. And by putting that off, some of our students that are most impacted especially by the pandemic right now, this schedule is not providing that time and space and flexibility to, to meet their needs and, and help them. So, we're saying to a group of students that are coming off of, of a pandemic and might need some individual supports that, well, to just avoid change and to make it easier on, on the administration and staff, we're going to put off something that could help you a year. I, I don't like how that looks. I, I think we're very able in the remainder of this school year to work through those solve fours. The professional development, the time is built into the schedule for the professional development. It's the actual activities that go inside of there. And we, right now with Monday late starts, we have to go through that exercise right now every year to prepare for what goes in the late start time. This is just rethinking that as to how it fits into the rotating block time. So, it's not, it's not a brand-new concept. It's not, once again, as Mike said, reinventing the wheel. It's just planning differently.
And will that professional development time also include consideration of how you're going to evaluate that, once this change is in place, that teachers, you know, some will, will go to it like fish in water and some will struggle with it? How we're going to evaluate that they are in fact using that extra time?
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same mechanisms we use right now to evaluate teachers and make sure that they're using their time appropriately. It would just be using it in this, this new model. But I, I also think over the course of the year, the administrative team will not think, I know, that is over the course of the year, it's our responsibility as administrative team to bring suggestions to the board to how we monitor the progress of this. So, some of that is, you need to build a little bit before I can come to you and say, here are the absolute metrics that I would like to follow. But we know that the number of student interactions with support that they use, we should be following things like GPA for individual students and especially see students that might start out struggling catch up and advance their GPA because we're providing that individual support. And I would think overall, we should see the number of failures decrease in this model, actually D's or F's decrease in this model because of the individual support that we're providing. Now, it's going to be difficult, that last metric will be difficult to separate all of the other things that we're doing to support students and the impact of coming off of a pandemic and all of those things to isolate those variables. But we could definitely track students over time and see, are they making progress? If not, why? And is this model working for them?
Any other questions?
I have a couple. In looking at things like, well, first of all, are you going to try to restrict those access periods to Wednesday and Thursday? For example, like if there's a homecoming thing on a Friday, is there going to be a modified Friday?
So, that's, that's the exact kind of things that we need to work through this year once we get this up and going, is have the, the conversation of, on the week of an access, do we just modify one of those block days? So, it's just the block days we're, we're playing with schedules? Or are we going to modify a Friday because that's traditionally where it's fallen? But week by week, we're going to go through the school year and figure out how those things fall into what's there. But as you can imagine, it's going to take some time and, and effort. I don't want to pull the administrative effort towards this until we get approval to move forward.
And then in things like physical education where there's exemptions or, you know, that, to me, I, I look at this and I see, I see basically a way for a lot of kids to be done at 1:30 on Wednesday and Thursday.
On one of those two days, yeah.
Both actually, because if they have a PE exemption for a semester and then possibly a eighth-period study hall or, you know, some, I mean, it just, it's.
Jenny, I did not hear your concern.
You can't hear me?
So, the concern is around PE exemptions or study halls and then the amount of free time that students might have around that. I, I think in other schools that we have seen move this way, because students have more time during school day, they actually see the number of study halls decrease and the number of academic courses increase, which is a good thing overall, right? We want students more engaging in academic opportunities throughout the day. So, I, I think we're going to see the same thing happen with PE exemptions and where a lot of kids are taking PE exemptions because all of their evenings are full, then they need the time during the day to get all of their homework done and those kinds of things. Between the change that we made in lunch this year, next year with access and resource periods, it's my belief that over time, we're going to see less and less students engaging in, in those activities and instead engaging in academic opportunities. At the same time, it is the time that students are flexing, right? So, instead of doing that work in the evenings, they're flexing that time to during the day. If we look at how the world of work works for many of us, your day is flexed as well. You know, the time that you're spending on work and on family and on recreation is all kind of getting intermingled as the, the world moves forward. So, respecting students' use of time in this way is part of, of this kind of schedule change and teaching them how to manage that appropriately is part of this as well.
And then what we're voting on is not a block schedule.
Is not a what?
The block schedule.
No, it is a hybrid block.
But I mean, it's, that, moving toward that has been decided.
Well, moving towards that is what we've been working on. By voting on this tonight, assuming, you know, there's board approval of this, we'll continue to work towards that. If it's a no vote today, we'll have to figure out what the concerns are and, and try to address those and come back at a future board meeting. But it is the intent of the administration to move towards this model because we strongly believe that this is how we can move education forward for students.
You know, I like a lot of the things that you're promising with this schedule, especially for students in terms of the resources that they're going to be able to utilize. But I think the biggest thing that I've heard from students recently has just been, especially for students who experienced a normal year and then a COVID year and then a hybrid year and then this year, another year of, of the schedule that they're not used to seems to be just a bit overwhelming for them. I think really what they're looking for is just consistency, especially those who are juniors right now are going to be seniors next year. I, I think they're really just, they just want a normal school year or as close to as we, as we can get. But I do, I like, I like the idea of a block schedule in some capacity, especially the things that it can provide to the students. But I think if, is there a way to vote on moving forward with, coming up with some of the, the plans, sort of fleshing out some of those ideas a little bit more so that we can get a better idea of what this is going to look like in practice? Because I feel like there's a lot of open-ended things that you're trying to work out right now. So, it feels a little premature to vote to approve the schedule for, for next fall.
Yeah, what you're approving tonight is really the basic structure for, for us to work inside of it and authorizing us to do the work, right? And then over the course of the year, we'll continue to bring this to us, bring this to you and to fill in the gaps, right? And if we get closer to the end of the school year and board members are concerned that, oh, this is too fast, we should put this off a year, we can make that decision later on in the year. But I, I need this to continue to move forward and say, this is what we, we intend on doing. So, that, you know, there's, there's still a long time between now and next fall to, for board members to, to make the recommendation to the administration that we slow this down, we delay a year. It's possible that as we do this work with our staff, we come with the same recommendation. But right now, I feel like we can get this work done. We just need this, this point in time to, to move forward and say, yep, spend the time on this, come back to us, continue to address our concerns and the community's concerns and work on this over the course of the year. And Chris, to address the concern about it's another year that changes, in high school, it changes every year for students, right? Their schedule, sometimes semesters to semester, their schedule changes. And as we established earlier, week to week, the schedule is changing, the bell schedules are changing, the calendar is changing. So, our, our students are very adaptable to, to change, right? And it's our job to make sure that students that are challenged with that kind of change or have difficulties managing that kind of change, that we're supporting them and making sure that they're successful inside of it.
So, what would be the last date you'd have to have this solve fours done? I mean, you have to assign students to courses and juggle their schedules. So, we're not talking about like this final decision being made in, you know, August 1st?
No. I mean, we'll, we'll continue to present over the course of the year. I would expect that by the time that people go home in May, right, at the end of May, that they would know pretty close to what their experience is going to be when they return in the fall. Right now, it's nice for people to know what the schedule is going to look like. It's important as department chairs move in and start scheduling classes and classrooms and teachers to make sure that things flow appropriately and that they know to start building towards that now because that's a long process to work to. Ultimately, the schedule is still an eight-period day, right? There's still three days a week that it's a eight-period day. So, it's very much, the schedule's going to be built very similar to how it's been built in the past, which with a few caveats, knowing that those periods move around a little bit on the block days. But even up until May, if we decided, nope, we're going to just stay with the schedule that we have right now, it'd be a very easy thing to just say, we're not comfortable with this, let's just stay with the eight-period day because that's what it's structured around, right? The only thing we're doing fundamentally is just changing the order and the length of periods on Tuesday or on Wednesday and Thursday each week. So, it's, it's a shifting of time in the bell schedule on those two days, much like what we did today for a late start Monday with a PBIS schedule, right? We, we changed the bell schedule around on today. That's all that is, all we're setting up is to do on Wednesday and Thursday each week throughout the school year. If we wanted to go back to what we have now, it's a, a very easy thing to decide later on this year that, no, we've decided we're not comfortable. Administration, you've brought us all of these things, you've solved for all of the, we're just not ready to move forward at this point, at which point we could just keep doing what we're doing now without, you know, forcing kids to choose different courses or, you know, anything like that. But we also think it's important as students go into course scheduling to think about, well, maybe I will take that extra course because there's enough time in here. I don't feel like I need a study hall. You know, there's certain decisions like that that might play into a student's course selection that we feel it's important that they get an idea of what the schedule might look like when they head into that time.
Ultimately, I'll need to see, you know, these
Ultimately, I'll need to see, you know, these solve fours solved, right?
Correct.
But bottom line, what this boils down to is the goal of this is greater student success. There's no reason to do this unless we think that this is going to help the students next year greater, more than if we left things as it is. And it's the job of our administration, right, to prove to us that, that this is, this is going to be the result. And so ultimately, the burden is, is on Hank and, and the staff. At this point, I think, you know, I'm supporting what, you know, going forward with this. Of course, with the reservation, I think that everybody has, and, and you've already stated this, Hank, if these soft fours can't be solved in a, in a, in a, in an adequate way, that student success will be greater. Then we back the ship up, you know, back the truck up and move forward next year as we have in the past.
Absolutely. Tonight's the authorization to task me with bringing you all of those solve fours and making sure all of your concerns are answered over the course of this school year.
Right.
So that's what a, a yes vote is this evening.
To kind of revisit what Nancy brought up in looking at the juniors this year and just what they've already adapted to, is there any, is there a way that you could begin this with the incoming freshmen?
No, it, this needs to be a holistic schedule change. There's a lot of courses that run with all four grade levels in them. So it isn't something where you could just do a school within the school model and isolate it to one grade level. It's an all or nothing change. It's a good question, though. All right, any other questions on this one? Thank you, Board, for your time on this one. I know that this is a, a big change and it's a lot to take in and we'll continue to answer those questions hopefully over the course of the year, assuming a positive vote this evening.
Before we move on to insurance plans, could, uh, let's just have a mask check. People in the back, I'm, people in the back, let's, everybody needs to put their mask on. We need to comply. We need to comply. Ma'am in the red, could you put your mask on, please? These young men up here.
Please don't comply and shut up.
Excuse, okay.
Please just, just please put on the masks so we can continue the meeting.
Please put on your masks so we can continue.
Thank you.
If there are going to be outbursts... If there are going to be outbursts... If there are going to be outbursts and I feel or any member of the board or administration feels that the safety of the people in this room are at jeopardy, I am going to adjourn the meeting. I will call for adjournment. So let's be quiet, let's put our masks on and let's move on to the exciting discussion of insurance.
All right, the next item, Gina. Calendar year 2022 insurance premiums. I've shared this information with the board previously. If you go to the next slide, Gina. Premiums are increasing and this is done with Hub, who is our, oh, boy, Mark, what's the name of, they are our program manager? So this is based on actual costs in our plan. Our PPO plans are all self-insured plans, so this is based on actual and projected costs in those plans. You can see a various number of increases for each of those plans across the board that the board will be voting on this evening to take action on. This is, sets up the opportunity for us to go into open enrollment, starting very soon after pending board approval this evening. Gina, if you go to the next slide. Because we recognize that some of those premium increases might be challenging, we're introducing a new plan offering that's a, another PPO plan, it's a consumer-driven health plan. It is a lower premium plan but a higher deductible plan but comes with a health savings account. And we're recommending that the board increases contributions to this plan because the premiums are lower. So it's a way of saving, sharing that savings with the employees. And then one more slide, I think, Gina. Nope, no, that was it. So it's, oh, it was on, in the text of there. So for each of the PPO plans, we have a, a percentage of covering by employee group and we're recommending that by the board approving these tonight, that they would pass on a 5% additional contribution for this PPO plan for each of those groups respectively. So the board's been through this as, as benefits and I've provided a lot of information. Are there any outstanding questions on this topic? All right, I'll invite Mark to come up to address the post issuance tax compliance report, one of the board's favorite reports of the year.
Well, yes, it's my responsibility to give a post issuance tax compliance report. So this is for bonds when we issue them after they're out and in the communities and in the market. We need to monitor them each year to make sure if we have arbitrage, report that to IRS, if we're doing things with the, with a private concern, which we shouldn't be doing, we do, we'd need to report that. Are any changes in our major financial changes in our finances? If we, we have to have our CAFR put on the web once a year, updated and things, it's like in 2018, we had an upgrade in our, our status to double A-plus and that needed to be reported just so the people that hold the bonds have an idea of what's going on in the district. And there's a, it'll complex report that's there along with the memo that I have presented in the board packet that shows we've met all the compliance issues that we need to with and we're, we're in shape for this year.
All right, any questions for Mark? All right, thank you, Mark.
Nicely done, Mark, thank you.
All right, I'm going to invite Jim forward to go through the capital improvement plan for next year.
Okay, first slide, it's a combo tonight. I'm going to bring some ESER funding and projects that Gina brought to the board in September, kind of go through them a little bit just to give you an idea of what they are and a timeline. So there's four that are going to go to ESER projects. One's already completed, it's the eating area at South. Pavers are done, just need to get furniture, we'll be doing that, opening up for spring. Rooftop units, so there's three here, HVAC, one's a cooling unit, one's a packaged heating and cooling unit and a air handler. So these are three that were due to be done in the near future. Some of the benefits of why we're doing this through ESER, greater supply of fresh air instead of the 25%, they give 100%. Also the filtration, we can bump up to a higher MERV rating, so particulates will be caught and better fresh air throughout the classroom as it exchanges. So in the end, air quality improvement. Timeline, bid date in December, I'll bring that to you in January and then construction for the next summer. If you remember last year's capital plan, we had a north chiller replacement on it. That was funded by ESER too. That work was completed this past summer. We added an additional project. If you remember the leak here at North and the wood boards warping, part of the problem was the drainage and the roof that was not completed through MFP. So we're going to finish that project with capital funding from this year. Hope that's not too confusing. So we got rid of North Chiller, off the list, we added North Roof on the list. Again, the bid date will be in December, I'll bring that to you in January and construction will start this summer. Next slide, Jim. Okay, the capital plan. Most of these you're familiar with. Large RMS maintenance repairs for our, our schools as the year goes by unexpected. Annual bleacher repair, we do a yearly inside and outside bleacher inspection and then that money is allotted for the repairs of that. Boiler replacement is for district building at ASC, that's the original 1993 boiler, so useful life out of it and we're going to replace that this coming summer. FFNE for the buildings, you'll see that for both North and South, so I'll just go through that, that's furniture fixtures and equipment that are needed. Grounds repair, outside work. Science lab 318, those are floor tiles that are popping up. We'll replace that floor with similar floor that we did with the MFP that you're seeing throughout the building. Grounds mower and tractor, it's a combo at North, those are old pieces of equipment need to be replaced, so we're going to package them together. Building automated system, that's for the main office here at North, so upgrades to that. Physical education office here at North, that's a renovation that was done in 1999, so they're going to redo that office, there's 11 teachers, make some space, get some new furniture, do some work in there. Again, FFNE and grounds for South, similar to North. Social studies office renovation at South, that'll be similar to what we did with MFPs, redoing the renovation of the area for the staff, that's a bigger one than at North. Softball field and dugout renovation, there'll be new dugouts. There's also some drainage issues at home plate, so that, that work will be done as well. And a towel handler, which is basically a forklift on wheels, you see them a lot on construction sites. South's never had a forklift, so multi-use for many things that they're going to need, including getting up to 40 feet high on their buildings, exchanging filters, things like that. Any questions?
No.
No, not for me.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Update to the resolution to prohibit sexual harassment?
All right, so several years ago, schools across Illinois were passing these resolutions. There's been changes in several of the policies and laws, well, laws and then policies, that impact this resolution. What this is, is a cleanup of both the resolution and the policies that are, that are connected to it to keep up with changes in, in state and federal law. Once again, the wrong order, federal and state law. So it's the recommendation of the administration tonight that the board approved this resolution to just be in compliance with, with those changes. Any questions? All right, hearing none.
Freedom of Information Act requests?
Yep, we had them this month. We've responded to several and the results of those are posted on the district website. Gina, if you advance, well, I think I'm out of order, but later on, there's a slide that maybe I didn't even include it. But up on the website, if you search for FOIA's, you can find all of them.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item any member of the board wishes to remove for further discussion? Hearing none, I need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes the personnel report to transfer of position classified, appointments classified, leave of absence classified, the personnel report retirement certified, retirements classified, resignations classified and the financial pages.
So moved.
Second. I think that was Terry and Mike.
Terry and Mike. Thank you very much. Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, the consent agenda passes. Now we move on to the action items. First, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the bell schedule for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and I didn't hear the second.
Second.
Terry.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
No.
Jenny Hagstrom.
No.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye. It passes. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the calendar year 2022 insurance plans and premiums as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Who does it say, Terry?
Terry and Mike.
Terry and Mike. Thank you. Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye, the motion carries. And finally, we need a motion for the Board of Education to adopt the resolution to prohibit sexual harassment as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and...
Terry.
Terry.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, certainly passes. Okay, moving on to all business, this is the motion for the Board of Education to approve the policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Joanna?
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, the policy is carried. Okay, we're going to move into the second reception of visitors. Prior today, you had a statement you wanted to read?
First of all, just some process and protocol. We have a large number of people that wish to speak this evening that have filled out comment slips. I have prioritized them according to board policy to those that are residents in the District 99 attendance area and those that are not. I believe that in the time that is allocated, we would not be able to get through more than half of the people that wish to speak. So my recommendation to you, Dr. Kupka, as you have the right to set the rules for this evening, are that we extend the amount of time that we hear perspectives of our visitors, but we also shorten the amount of time that each person speaks to be respectful of the amount of time that this evening takes. So I'm, I'm recommending a two minutes per speaker, but extending the amount of time to be 40 minutes of total time.
It works for me. Does any board member have an issue with that? Okay.
So once we, I'll start the clock once we start calling people up, but before we start that, I would, I have a statement that I would like to read in anticipation of what I believe some of the speakers are here to speak about tonight. So, good evening, everyone. Before we begin the reception of visitors, I would like to address a few matters in regards to instructional resources, including library books and processes around selection and retention of these resources. I believe, based on what I've seen here, that we have several visitors in the room tonight that are here in regards to the book Gender Queer. Public schools are governed by federal and state laws along with board policies and administrative regulations. The book Gender Queer meets the criteria for inclusion in our library under the guidelines in our collection development policy. This is an optional book and not part of any course or required reading. However, just as there is a process to determine if a title should be in our library, there is a process to determine if the title should remain in our collection. Board policy 6.260 establishes the right for a resident to challenge an instructional resource through an objection form. We have received two such objection forms for the book Gender Queer. Our established, well-defined process, which has been used in the past, allows residents an opportunity to provide a rationale as to why this title should no longer be in our collection. The process is followed to determine the validity of this request. Our administration is dedicated to ensuring this process is followed with fidelity and that everyone's rights are respected. Ultimately, as superintendent, my responsibility is to ensure that the laws, policies and regulations are followed correctly. I will continue to do that properly as we advance through the process. The outcome of the process will determine this community's determination if this resource should remain in our collection. Although we welcome everyone's... I ask that this evening, as you choose to share your perspectives, that you remain respectful of those in the room, others watching online at home, and those in attendance this evening, including your fellow community members, students in the room, board members, administration, and our student board members present this evening. With that, we can start the reception of visitors. Gina, if you'll advance, if you'll advance to the timer that's two minutes and then back up one slide, skip past that one.
Yes.
All right, I think if you go one more, it will start the two-minute timer. Go ahead, and then you can back up, and then we can advance when the first person comes up to speak. Thank you. All right, as I indicated, according to our policy, I will be calling up people that have attested that they are residents of the District 99 attendance area first. This is starting at 7:40, so it will end at 8:20.
Just before you begin, did you include Mrs.?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, our first speaker is Josiah Pointer.
Is that a press microphone?
Are you comfortable with that?
That is, okay, what press?
WGN.
That is a microphone from WGN.
What is it?
Okay, now, wait, 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 before you begin, before the clock begins, let's be respectful and listen to what people have to say. Everybody who's going to be having a chance to speak deserves the same respect.
All right.
Hello, School Board, parents, and community members. My name is Josiah Pointer, and I am an 18-year-old senior, and I attend Downers Grove North. I play football and write for our school newspaper, The Omega. At North, I have found that one of our strengths is inclusion at North. We have numbers of clubs, activities, and events for almost anybody, including myself. I first moved here in 2019, before my sophomore year, and I immediately joined the football team. There, I found kindness and brotherly love almost immediately. I felt like I finally found a family in a time where I didn't know anyone and felt like an outsider. I couldn't imagine my life without those men. Inclusion matters to young people. This is why we must have this book in our school's library. Inclusion brings an opportunity to grow in a safe environment and brings comfort to people who feel unloved and cast out. I understand this novel, this novel has scenes in it that's mature and sexual, to say the least, that makes people uncomfortable and brings up talking points that are not always easy to talk about with families, especially those who are religious, which, again, as a Christian, I understand. That completely is understandable. However, what is not, is taking someone's inclusion in, taking someone's inclusion in terms of the book, even if it makes you uncomfortable. And it's not like we haven't been given books with sex in them before. Books like Montana 1948 and It both have graphic rape scenes and sexual group sex with children.
Okay.
Children.
Thank you, Josiah.
The gentleman is speaking. Go ahead.
I just feel that inclusion matters, and as a straight man, I could never understand what LGBTQ members go through, but it's important that we include those so they feel not left out.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like the room to come to order. Whether you agree with the speaker or not, grandstanding and applause during or after each speaker will only cut into the number of speakers that are allowed to speak this evening. So please just allow each speaker to speak, and we'll move on to the next person afterwards. The next person up is Carl Miller.
Okay. Okay, just ask you to hold a moment. And this one will quick check among the board members.
Lays some time.
How many board members have difficulty, would like to have the WGN microphone removed? Excellent. I cannot, okay. I'm just going to have a quick.
We're putting a pause on the clock.
Quick check with the other board members. How many board members present would like to have the WGN microphone removed? At least one? Two?
This is a public meeting. We're not afraid of.
Okay. I'm going to ask for silence. I'm asking for board member feedback.
As soon as somebody else.
Two?
Two.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, though, for expressing your feelings.
We'll extend the time until 8:22.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Carl Miller, and I am a 23-year-old lifelong resident of District 99. And the reason I'm here tonight is to ask you to drop the mask mandate for the district. At this juncture, at this, at this juncture, there is no scientific or data-driven justification for a policy to force masks on students, who by and large are not threatened by this virus and to a great extent are not even vectors of the virus to others around them. So I would just say, you know, I think that the upside of masks is, you know, dubious at best, and that there's demonstrable downsides, like hypercapnia when students are breathing in their own carbon dioxide, and also just the inability to communicate. Facial expressions are important for kids, they're important for adults, but I think, but I think it's important that we just cut out the face diaper, because at this point, it's just become political, it's become a cult, and it isn't scientific anymore. So I'm just asking you all to have, I'm asking you all to have, to have courage. I know it's not easy in this environment. I know the governor sometimes thinks he's a dictator, but many school districts are standing up and having courage in allowing for children and parents to have freedom. You know, the fact we're debating now whether we can breathe free air, I just think is, says quite a bit, says quite a bit about where we've, where we've come to. I'm asking you all to have courage, and I thank you for your attention this evening.
Yeah.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Lemansky.
Can you hear me okay?
I'll come help. Yeah, actually, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Lemansky. My son is a freshman here at North. Baron Frederick von Steuben, a Prussian military man hired by George Washington to whip the Continental Army into shape during the darkest days of the Revolutionary War, is known for his bravery and the discipline and the grit he brought to the American troops. Historians also think he was homosexual and served as an openly gay man in the military at a time when sex between men was punished as a crime. Though his name is little known among Americans today, writes Eric Tricky for Smithsonian, every US soldier is indebted to von Steuben. He created America's professional army. I wonder what he would have thought of Bill Clinton's Don't Ask, Don't Tell. We have all heard of the Underground Railroad. Downers Grove itself played a role in the Underground Railroad. We often hear how white people would help and harbor black people to safety, but we never ever learn the genius way in which black people communicated the way to point, where the meetup point was and when. They had to hide their communications, so they did it right out in the open. The slaves would often sing in the fields as they worked. These work songs and field hollers were used to communicate many things, but one was being, where the Underground Railroad was to me. These field hollers were the precursors to the call and response of the American spirituals and gospel music and to the blues. The blues formed the basis of jazz, rock and roll, R&B, funk, and even hip hop, and who can even stand country unless it is laced with blues? To me, as a professional musician, singer, songwriter, and composer, American music is black music, because it certainly would not be the same without their influence. Unfortunately, that beautiful music was born from pain and suffering and denial of freedom, real denial of freedom, not asking you to consider the public health and having you wear a piece of cloth on your mouth. The most patriotic person I ever knew was my father, who served for four years in the United States Military, and he went, he went when the Korean War, he just voluntarily went when they were drafting people, and he taught me that you don't need to wear an American flag. You need to do what is right for your country. And right now, that's wearing a mask.
You're not a slave, you're a fenceman.
Next up is Julia Hansen. Julia Hansen.
Let's keep it down, let's be respectful, because if there's threatening, threatening language or booing, I am going to adjourn.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julia Hansen, a junior at DGN and editor for the DGN Omega. Yesterday, I read the graphic novel slash autobiography Gender Queer by Maya Kobabe. Kobabe uses E, M, air pronouns. I know that's like really weird, confusing, but they're pronouns I had heard of but never actually used. In this coming-of-age novel, Kobabe was assigned female at birth and realizes E doesn't have any air to be completely masculine or feminine. As a cisgender and straight woman, I could not relate to Kobabe in that way, and parts of this book were uncomfortable to read, but I was expecting that. The books in our library are intended to entertain and educate students, which for me was accomplished in reading Gender Queer. Nothing about this book was new to me. Just like nearly every other high school student at DGN, I have a cell phone where I'm shown new ideas every day. Parents, I can guarantee your teenagers have seen it all. Whether it is in our phones or discussed among friends, nothing is censored. Somehow, among all this corruption, I'm still straight and have not fallen victim to homosexual content on my cell phone. I know. Us high school students are not impressionable in the way it is often believed, and Gender Queer is not a grooming tool for sexual predators. We have already been stripped of our innocence completely, and one copy of a book in our library makes no difference to that. After all, most kids have never checked out a book from our library. Yeah. It is okay to dislike or disagree with Gender Queer. The ideas discussed in the novel are weird and foreign, so conflict is inevitable, but it's not okay to diminish the accessibility of new ideas to students. Someone who picks up this book will either feel like they've finally felt, been understood, or as I did, they will learn to put themselves in other's shoes. As a high school student, I ask that we lead with an open mind and keep the, keep the line of different perspectives open. Also, nobody has to read it, so I'm writing an opinion article on the book, so if anyone wants to talk to me after this, feel free to approach me and give me your opinion or ideas.
Yeah, the next person that should be in line is Hillary Denk.
You guys should have put a picture of the picture up there so everyone sees what everyone's talking about.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes, hi. My name is Bruce Beckman, and I'm a resident of Downers Grove, and I just so happen to be a former member of this board many, many, many years ago. I, I'm here to share a historical perspective, and sometimes, as a current board member, you said that's just what I need, is historical perspective. But in fact, as board president, I ran into a very similar situation, and we did have a, have a condition where there was a book called The Bluest Eye, and there were members of the community who did object to that book. It wasn't a very good book. We all, on the board, we all read the book to get a feel for what it is. It had a sexual overture. But what I found, the irony of it is, the more controversial we became, the more students picked, checked out the book to read it, because one of our practices was, if nobody read the book, it circulated off of the library shelves. So as well-meaning as these individuals might be here, they may be working against their own interests. So I highly recommend you keep the book there, you exercise your constitutional rights, and let it move forward. Thank you.
Hillary Denk is up, and after Hillary is Laura Hoist.
Let's have a quiet, quiet.
Hi, I am a resident of Downers Grove. I grew up here, and my children went to District 99 schools. I want to first thank the school board for their incredible service to our community as volunteer leaders. You have been under enormous stress and strain, and I thank you so much for your service. I also want to ask a question. Why is diversity, equity, and inclusion so controversial? Aren't we all opposed to discrimination on the basis of race, religion, sexual orientation, and gender identity? Shouldn't books that express that information to our children, shouldn't they be included as part of our public education? Diversity, inclusion improve teaching and learning. People learn and enrich their abilities to think critically and creatively as they engage in conversations across difference, especially when all learners' abilities and attributes are embraced. These activities can help personal development, improve social skills, build self-confidence, develop teamwork, and support independence for both the disabled and non-disabled in our children. This is another part of inclusion that we don't talk nearly enough about. There are five great benefits in teaching diversity in education. They better prepare our students for a global economy, build confidence later in life, promote empathy, and reduce prejudice, improve student achievement, and foster creativity. I applaud all of you in your good work and the teachers' work, the principals' work, the superintendents, in continuing to support diversity, inclusion, and equity. Thank you.
Laura Hoist. After Ms. Hoist, Tabitha Irvin will follow Laura Hoist.
I understand you feel frustrated, but we need you so we can hear the speaker.
It's speaking microphone.
Yeah, we can't hear you. You're blocking certain people.
I'd like to request that the WGN microphone be removed.
Oh, there's nothing to hide.
They're already done.
The next speaker is Tabitha Irvin. Following Tabitha Irvin will be, I'm sorry, I still can't read your handwriting, will be the next person that I didn't recognize earlier. So Tabitha is up next.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Speak a little, get a little closer to the microphone. There you go, Tabitha.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you restart the timer then?
Go ahead, Tabitha.
Thank you, okay. So my name is Tabitha, and I am a junior at Downers Grove North, and please know that while I do have my own political identity, I will not allow my beliefs to dictate the contents of this speech, because I think that animosity and backlash honestly does nothing but feed the fire. So while being a Downers Grove taxpayer does entitle you to voice your opinion, it does not guarantee that you have a comprehensive understanding of what occurs during each school day at DGN or DGS. In fact, apart from teachers and sub administrators, students are the only people fully immersed in the school experience for 35 hours a week. With the highly controversial nature of America's current political atmosphere, the debate found in Downers Grove is understandable. You should all be able to voice your perspective on issues such as critical race theory, sex education, and COVID-19 mitigation protocols, and there are many platforms where you can do this. School board meetings are not one of them. The sole purpose of board meetings is to improve the student experience, and who better to advocate for the student experience than the students themselves? At the October 18th board meeting, of which I attended, the intended topic of discussion was the proposed hybrid schedule. However, it was not discussed by the community at all, but rather eagerly and immediately abandoned for political crossfire. That night and still tonight, do you know what I'm eager for? I'm eager to discuss issues that directly impact me and my peers every day. Issues like the proposed schedule, which will go into effect my senior year of high school, a schedule that has elicited a large number of complaints from various members of the school, of the student body, and a schedule that will impact every moment of each school day. Having two student board representatives is a great step in the right direction, and Jaden Scarlett are doing an amazing job, but no two students can possibly represent the needs and wants of nearly a 5,000-person student body. I hope that we can begin to discuss what really matters.
Tabitha, take your time.
I hope that we can begin to discuss what really matters and welcome the student's perspective. Thank you.
So the visitor whose name I couldn't pronounce or read at the beginning, that's who we, I can't remember who we decided that was, would be Who's up, and then after that would be Jim Devitt.
McBrowdy?
McBrowdy? The next will be Jim Devitt.
Okay. Do I need to tap it?
No, you're good.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing me out. As an owner and a practitioner of a healthcare practice for nearly 30 years, my focus every morning when I got up was, what is the best focus for me today to have an outcome that is good for my patient? You run an institution where much of childhood occurs in schools, and as for our D99 schools, I hope we can all agree that the focus should always be the child under your care. How do I personally evaluate that this is actually the case here? Students here are deserving of an honest and accurate education that gives them the freedom to pursue their dreams. Young people can handle hard truths, sometimes better than we do, as I can see tonight. Allow them the freedom to learn from others' actions and decisions, no matter how painful. History is a great teacher. Preparing each young person with a toolkit, which does include accurate and truthful info, along with critical thinking skills, gives them their new freedom to be the best they can be, regardless of where the student lives. These skills then enables them to learn from the past, the good, the bad, the ugly, all of what we've heard tonight, so that they can avoid making past, making the same mistakes by learning from the past. This leads to more successful life outcomes, makes our community and our state and our country stronger. Not doing this will literally cripple your student body. Don't know if I'll get through all this, but I'm going to do as much as I can. I know for myself, after my sister was in a terrible head-on car accident, it was a horrible experience, but I did learn from that, to wear a seatbelt, don't drive on icy, snow-blown roads at 2:00 AM in the morning, and the painful incident that I experienced just helped me make better decisions. I started wearing a seatbelt.
Thank you, your time has expired.
I started wearing a seatbelt after that.
Jim Devitt, you're up.
Thank you.
After Jim Devitt is Linda Schrons.
Good evening. My name is Jim Devitt. In a lot of what we're talking about tonight, there's a lot of rhetoric going around, and some of the other people who have spoken in the past have used sources such as TikTok for their talks. So what I did was, I went to the book, Illinois Criminal Code, right here. This is the law in the state of Illinois. Let me read from it. Harmful material. A person who, with knowledge that a person is a child, that is a person under 18 years of age, or who fails to exercise reasonable care in ascertaining the true age of a child, knowingly distributes or sends to or causes to be sent to or exhibits to or offers to distribute or exhibit any harmful material to a child guilty of a misdemeanor. Material is harmful if, to the average person, applying contemporary standards, its predominant appeal, taken as a whole, is to purient interest that is a shameful or morbid interest in nudity, sex, excretion, which goes substantially beyond customary limits of candor, a description or representation of such manners, and the material, the redeeming social importance of which is substantially less than its purient appeal. Distribution of harmful material in violation of this section is a Class A misdemeanor. A second or subsequent offense is a Class IV felony. Nothing in this section shall prohibit any public library or any higher, or any library operative in a credit institution of higher educational, education from circulating material, provided such circulation is in aid in legitimate or scientific educational purpose. We have some science up here, pages from that book. Tell me how these pictures are educational in any purpose. This is pornography, plain and simple, and it does not belong in our schools!
Next up is Linda Schrons, followed by Lauren Parrot. Linda Schrons, followed by Lauren Parrot.
Okay, let's have quiet for our next speaker, please.
Thank you. Hi, Linda Schrons. I'm a 35-year resident of Downers Grove. My daughter went through these hallowed halls, and it's kind of fun to be back here looking at the auditorium again. We've been through some really tiring times these last two years. We've all had to make decisions and take actions that we never anticipated we would be in the position of taking. And throughout the pandemic, the need for leadership has never been more clear. And so therefore, I'm here tonight to thank the Board of Education for the leadership that they have demonstrated in spite of the unknown difficulties you are facing. You guys have selfishly put yourself in frontline, not rewarded by fame or fortune, in fact, many times impugned for your decision-making. But throughout this last two years, one fact is very, very clear to me, and that is that the, in your leadership, the safety, well-being, and education of the community's children have been your top priority. And so it's a lot, it's really easy to, you know, come up here and complain about your grievances and this and that and the other thing. A lot of times when people are happy with the way things are going, they don't bother to come up here and say anything, because, you know, why should they? Everything's going well. But I want you to know that there are many people in the community who are aware of the pressure that's being borne upon you, and we are very supportive of the Board of Education and its actions, and I thank you very much for your service. Thank you.
Lauren Parrot is next, followed by Jill Bartelme.
Hello, board members, parents, students, District 99 taxpayers, and people who don't live in the school district. My name is Lauren. I'm 17, and I'm a senior. Up until last week, I didn't know the book Gender Queer existed. That's how little the teachers and staff members of DGN encourage students to read it. The only way a student would know about it is if they found out about it on their own, thought it was something they'd be interested in, and checked it out. This isn't being forced upon your kids, but it gives kids who would be interested in this story a choice to read it. I also have a question. Handmaid's Tale, Angela's Ashes, and IT are all books in the school library. Handmaid's Tale has a graphic sex scene between a man and a woman. Angela's Ashes includes multiple graphic scenes that deal with masturbation. And IT, a wildly popular book amongst the school, includes a graphic sex scene between a fifth-grade girl and five of her male friends. But why are these books not being censored? Let's not present getting rid of Gender Queer as censoring our children from sex. It's homophobia. It's an outward protest of media for queer students. It's telling kids that who they are is wrong. Every day, my parents tell me to listen to all sides of the story and consider all viewpoints before making a decision. If we censor this book, where does the censorship end? As high school students, we should have the materials to educate ourselves on all topics, ideas, and ways of life. That way, we can have a society of people who can understand different viewpoints and can come to compromises with each other. Gender Queer has some ideas that some people may not agree with, but does that mean we should be banning, that we should ban it? How is it different than Donald Trump's Twitter ban? If we rob students of all information, we'll have a society of people who hate each other and can't come to a decision. Thank you so much for listening and considering mine, a student's, ideas.
Jill Bartelme is next, followed by Kylie Spahn. Jill Bartelme, followed by Kylie Spahn.
Hello, my name is Jill Bartelme, and I just found out I'm part of Antifa. Anyway, first of all, I just want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you have put up with this year especially, and the past years. I am a mother of a student who just recently graduated last year, and of a student who will be coming in a couple of years. Because of this, I, the thought of banning books is very concerning to me. Especially when it's coming from the Freedom Fighting Group. Please.
Please continue.
Please continue. Students have a choice whether or not to check out the books and the material, materials out of the library. As parents, it's our job to make sure they follow our wishes. It's called parenting. So if you don't want your child to take a book out of a library, perhaps you should have a conversation with your children.
Excuse me. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you, Nancy.
One more outburst, seriously, one more outburst, and we will adjourn into closed session. Let the speaker speak, no matter what side they represent.
She has one minute on her timer. Just restarted, Gina.
My apologies for interrupting.
That's fine. I support the students. They have spoken today, and they continue to speak, and I give you mad props for being here today. They know what's best for them. They know what kids they can figure out. That's what high school is for. They come here, this is that part of their time of their life between being a kid and becoming an adult. When they leave here, they are expected to become an adult. They sure as heck can figure out what books they can read and cannot read. And it's not for us to decide what is accessible to them, just because we find it inappropriate. And if you really fear that your children are going to read something and figure something about themselves, then that speaks more about you than it does about the book.
Kylie Spahn, followed by Marcella Chervol.
Good evening. Kylie Spahn, District 99 parent. Firstly, I would like to thank the board, administrators, and teachers for all their hard work and dedication to our students. You are doing a tremendous job, and I appreciate all that you are doing. Secondly, I would like to address the board regarding the national trend to ban LGBTQ books in high school libraries. Our own district is facing such a challenge from a small group of people who want to ban LGBTQ books, such as Gender Queer, Beyond Magenta, and Fun Home. This group is targeting and marginalizing our pride community. They are not calling for the banning of graphic novels that depict heterosex. They are solely targeting books that represent the pride community. The role of public schools is to educate everyone, regardless of race, color, sexual identity, socioeconomic status, and disability. Banning books and resources that represent a minority group of students is destructive to the trust these students have in their teachers, and denigrates the qualifications and experiences of our professional school librarians. Thirdly, students have the intellectual freedom to choose which books they want to read. No one is forcing students to read LGBTQ books. In high school, we expect students to be an adult and make adult decisions, from driving a car and getting a job, to making life-changing college and career decisions. Yet we have a small group of parents who believe that students are childlike when it comes to selecting literature. Additionally, what may be inappropriate or uncomfortable to one student may be a valuable resource for another student. Banning books that represent a minority population is taking that choice and intellectual freedom away from all. Finally, I would like to encourage the board to require any parent who wants to challenge these books in our libraries to follow policy and go through a reconsideration process, and to refuse to act merely upon someone's complaint at a school board meeting. Thank you.
Marcella Chervol, followed by Morgan Vasquez.
My name is Marcella Dirich Shere. For the past 22 years, I've been involved with numerous organizations at the national, state, and local levels, each advocating tirelessly for health freedom and personal choice when it comes to medical decisions. The fact that these types of organizations are even necessary in a free society should be appalling to each and every one of you. Today, there are two diametrically opposed perceptions of reality existing at the same time. One is influenced by media, government, and pharmaceutical fear-based propaganda. It's groupthink, cult-like behavior, and it's jeopardizing our liberties by those who can't comprehend the impact of their short-sighted decisions. It's abnormal to think that wearing a mask is required to stay alive. The other is driven by rational thought, experience, observation, and intuition. This segment of the population are willing to die to preserve and protect our freedoms so that we may each live as we see fit. I stand by my previous statement that COVID, this manufactured crisis, threatens our way of life more than it ever will our health. Masks are subjugation and submission. Those of you on the board have had plenty of opportunity to do the right thing, to allow parents to make medical choices for their children, but you've sold your souls to push a heinous agenda. And those of you in the audience who refuse to see past your fear are all too willing to surrender your rights for some illusion of safety. As a first-generation American whose family actually lived through fascism, socialism, and communism, I perhaps understand better than most that freedom is never to be taken for granted. I share this as a cautionary tale. Tyranny is real, and it's taken root. You cannot comply your way out of it. Your blind obedience and your abject servitude will not serve any of us well.
Mary Ann Vasquez, followed by Leslie Sadowski Fugit.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Vasquez, signed from Downers Grove. The discussion tonight is essentially about book censorship, which is the suppression of ideas, words, and images that some people find offensive to them in some way. Everyone has their own thoughts as to what they consider appropriate for themselves and their children, and that is the right and part of freedom as Americans. However, others may have contrary thoughts, and they are entitled to the same freedom to choose what is right for themselves and their family. Certain individuals, based on their own personal situation, may find this book helpful. The book that is under question can be helpful and instructive. They should not be denied access based on the feelings of others who have no idea what these people are going through. I suspect the children of these parents opposing these books likely have no inclination to check these books out of the library.
Please do not interfere with the speaker.
And the parents are truly concerned about this.
We'll give you 30 seconds. Please do not interfere with the speakers. Please refrain.
Isolating your children from the world and opposing beliefs is getting more and more difficult. But the larger problem is how we are being divided in this country into opposing camps and media, and the internet is poisoning us against one another. Thank you.
Please respect the speaker's personal space. Follow, the next speaker will be Sean Piazza.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Leslie Sadowski Fugit, a Downers Grove resident with a kindergarten at Fairmount who will eventually go to Downers Grove South. I also volunteer with organizations who engage local teens. I want to speak to encourage the board to continue with its DEI efforts and expand its LGBTQ plus resources. LGBTQ plus youth are more than twice as likely to report experiencing persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness than their heterosexual peers. High school students who identify as LGBTQ plus are more than four times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to their heterosexual peers, and 40% of transgender adults have attempted suicide in their lifetime compared to 5% of the general US population. It is estimated that LGBTQ youth and young adults have a 120% higher risk of experiencing homelessness, often the result of family rejection or discrimination based on gender identity or sexual orientation. As you can see, this is literally a matter of life and death. Having talked with local teens, I'm sad to say that bullying and lack of support is still an issue in our community. So I ask that you not only continue to stock the library with resources, but also please make sure there's training for all staff, not just teachers, to ensure that students are not misgendered and dead names are not used. Please ensure there are ample non-gendered bathrooms and locker rooms, especially given that we have just renovated. It isn't that hard to accept human beings for who they are. Let's make sure that we, as adults, are setting the example. Let's work hard to use preferred names, pronouns, and set consequences for those adults and students who do not comply with this basic act of humanity at D99 schools. We need to show our LGBT- D-99 schools. We need to show our LGBTQ plus youth that we love and welcome them for who they are, and that we recognize that they contribute meaningfully to the rich diversity of our community. So thank you, and I'm happy to talk with anyone further to ensure equity for this whole community. Thank you for what you do.
Sean Piazza followed by Terry Newsom.
Please bring your mask up. Please bring your mask up.
All right. A young Providence Catholic kid, full scholarship to football, U of I, senior quarterback, star quarterback at Glenbrook North High School, a young woman at Hensale South, Nastwick High School student. These all have committed suicide within the last four months. Even more alarming, CDC recently asked young adults if they had thoughts about killing themselves in the past 30 days. One out of four said yes. DuPage County has reported a 23% rise in suicides compared to last year. Even though suicide rates have fallen globally, they have climbed every year in the United States since 1999, increasingly 55% in the past two decades. Yet, the funding for suicide is far behind with the other causes of death. Even before the pandemic, suicide was the second-leading cause of death. Sorry, one young kids, young high school kids. I asked myself, why are so many kids thinking about suicide and unfortunately committing suicide? I believe a big part to blame is unwarranted and never-ending lockdowns. The children last year lost a year of schooling and social interaction. They needed to interact with each other, not with the phone or computer screen. This is essential to their mental development, and it is crucial. All we have heard for the last 18 months was about the virus, the vaccine, and the masks. They have been beating it down our throats. 74 million children, 18 and younger in this country, have died of the virus. Yet, every day in this country, 170 children commit suicide. Have you heard about that? I don't think so. Because you can't make a profit off of children dying, but you can make millions of profits on masks and vaccines. The focus should be on the children and only them. If we stop playing the political game, maybe we'd be able to stop some of these suicides from happening. Go back to teaching math, science, and history, helping our children to be children.
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you.
Do you have to steal that from the kids?
Terry Newsom. After Mr. Newsom is Emily Hernandez.
Hey, you and your friends are trying to convince us that Gender Queer, a child pornographic sketchbook, is acceptable in our schools under the pretense of inclusion and comedy. Additionally, you say it's okay because it's not assigned reading. It's only in the library. None of this justifies offering our children pornography. What you're doing to our children in the name of politics is criminal. Instead of wasting our time, our money, Dr. Nea, our children with CRT, equity, and disgusting pornographic material, you should focus our tax dollars on our children's education. Teach them reading, writing, and arithmetic. Gender Queer, which is supposed to be a book about coming out, if that's all this book was focused on, parents wouldn't have an issue with it. The problem is, as described by the author, it's a much-needed, useful, touchable guide. This is liberal code for teaching children how to perform oral sex, anal sex, wear strap-on dildos. These graphic images are totally unacceptable regardless of their gender or sexuality. Let me be clear, parents don't have an issue with books that help children cope with being gay or how to come out, no matter what your liberal clown friends say. Such a book as called The Times I Knew I Was Gay is also in Downers Grove South. These books are empowering children to navigate their sexuality without using graphic child pornography. I'd like to understand why this board believes graphic pornographic sketches showing young girls wearing strap-on dildo while other girl performs oral sex is necessary for our children, or why young boys tasting bubblegum-flavored condom before mounting each other before anal sex is beneficial, or a sketch of a young girl after fingering herself talks about tasting her vagina slime that's shown in one of these sketches dripping off her fingers. How do these images help children cope with their sexuality? I suggest D-99 removes this pornographic material immediately, or at minimum, you allow us parents to opt out of this garbage. It's not your right to decide if our minor children should have access to pornography. Every one of you should resign in disgrace. You're a danger to our children and D-99.
We still have, we still have several speakers, and we had up-and-down time. Please allow us to continue with the meeting, or we'll have to end it. All right, we had some delays during reception of visitors with people coming up and back. We hit the end of the allotted time. I recommend that we extend it to 8:30 to just make up for that lost time that we had between speakers. So the next speaker is Emily Hernandez, followed by Curtis Tate.
Good evening. My name's Emily Hernandez. I'm a senior here at Downers Grove North High School. Today, I would like to give my support to the board. I believe that any policy or change brought about into our education is done with our best interest in mind. Critical race theory and diversity and equity training are topics that have now been made controversial when they should have never become political. I realize that now both critical race theory, which is not taught at our schools, and diversity and equity training, which is implemented, are not the same thing, but they do go hand in hand. That is why education is absolutely necessary. In history classes, we learn about our great country's history, and we completely understand the importance of it. However, to be fully educated, we need to understand the full spectrum of how our society is undeniably founded on racism. Accepting this and realizing that we have the power to take action in order to create an exclusive and equitable community through empathy and allyship, students are able to take initiative and make our school culture what it is. We, myself included, are involved in clubs and organizations that promote and encourage diversity, equity, and exclusivity. In order to create a welcoming and accepting environment for all, which District 99 has been able to do thus far, it is necessary to understand that everyone comes from all different walks of life. Diversity and equity is important so we can provide additional resources to those who need it. Doing so is discriminatory or playing favorites. It is being aware that not everyone has the same privilege as you do. Restricting students from these resources would be detrimental and ultimately create an environment in which these students would not thrive in. All the students that you see here tonight, we, we are concerned students, and that is not a political statement. We will not be intimidated. Furthermore, we will not spread lies or disinformation about those who oppose us, for it is not in our interest to slander those who disagree with us. We always have and will continue to fight for our education. No lies or political activists will change our perspective. Whether you agree or disagree with us, we hope you will be open to hearing what we have to say. Thank you for your time.
Curtis Tate followed by David Rose.
Good evening. I just want to thank the board. I'd like to thank the administration as well. My name is Curtis Tate. I have two students who have came through Downers Grove already, Downers Grove North. I have one current student here who's a junior, and I have one coming in the next two years. My daughter is at West Point Academy. She came through these halls, she walked through these halls, and she experienced a lot of different things through these halls. What I'm scared about, what I'm hearing now, and as a graduate of 1996 of Downers Grove South and moved into this area in 1984, is the removal of equity, I've heard tonight. People talking who are not from this area does not understand the area. When I went to school here back in 1996 and throughout, I experienced a lot of things that were from hate. I saw bad things happen to me in schools, in the school all the time, and I had people make comments all the time. But the one thing I learned by living in Downers Grove is, we overcame as Downers Grove people. We were the ones that made the decisions. We were the ones who made the changes here in this district, and we all worked together. It wasn't perfect. It's still not perfect, but it has to be the influences of the parents, the students, and the people who live in this area. It is not people from the outside who wants to use a political agenda. Now, whatever you believe in, that's what you believe in. I get it. But if you don't live here, and you've never experienced being here, why are you here? We have to ask ourselves those questions. The one thing that I will applaud is these young students, because we can tell already from the education they're receiving right now, how eloquently they're speaking on topics and doing the research of what's going on in our society. These kids know what they need. And I just make sure, I heard a young lady ask for more student input on the school board, and I would encourage the school board to sit down with the students and have an opportunity for the students to show you the issues they're seeing.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
We have time for one more speaker, David Rose. David Rose? So, David, are you choosing not to speak? Okay, next would be Colleen Piercy will be our final speaker. Colleen's not here. David Hamm. I'd say at this point, we only have four slips left, so we'll just call up the rest of them. No David Hamm? Robin Cedarbread?
Good evening. I taught at the Other School for 35 years, retired now 11. English teacher, taught The Bluestye, taught Montana 1948, taught The Blue Structure, which was written by a young adult author who came to South, excuse me, I'm getting over sinus infection, who came to South and explained the purpose behind his book. We had a lot of people come to a board meeting who protested that book. That was the last board meeting I stood up at in defense of the book. We had a group of parents that wanted to go into our library with big black magic markers and cross out the offensive words. I stood up and defended that book. I defended the fact that we teachers had gone through years of schooling, that our board members supported what we taught, that we had been evaluated so many times for what we taught, and that they trusted us enough to allow us to teach those books. Then, I thanked them for their support, and today, I thank you for yours. Please stand up for the students' rights. Let them make the choice what they want to read. Let their parents help them in that decision, but don't allow people who don't live in the district, who don't have children in these schools, and have no skin in the game, make the decision for everybody else. I'm going to cough. Thank you.
Next up is Joe Amato, and then our last speaker will be Rich Brennan.
Thank you. I'd like to direct your attention to Policy Number 5.90. Second page, third paragraph. Each individual board member must, if an allegation has arise to the member during an open or closed board meeting, that a student is an abused child is defined in the Act, direct or cause the board to direct the superintendent or each equivalent school administrator to comply with the Act's requirements concerning the reporting of child abuse. I think you guys have been put on notice of the abuse of the pornography in the school, and you need to take action and make a report. Or we're going to have talked to the officer over there, as it says on this page. First page, third paragraph, any district employee who discovers child pornography on electronic and informational technology equipment, which is a book, shall immediately report it to local law enforcement. So we reported it to you right now. The National Center of Missing and Exploited Children's, Cyber Tipline, 1-800-843-5678, or on the hotline at www.cypertipline.com. The superintendent, building principal should also be promptly notified of the discovery, and the report has been made. So you guys have been put on notice that there's pornography in the school, and you need to do something about it. And for everybody that's up about the mask coming off and all that, that's not going to happen until they stop giving them the Esser money. So everybody coming up here and saying that people that don't live in the district got nothing to say. Bob Bunce, you took that Esser money. You took federal money that paid by the taxpayer throughout the country, not just the state.
Your time has expired. Rich Brennan, you're up. Rich will be our final speaker. Thank you, Rich. All right, that concludes the reception of visitors. We still have some business to complete. If you're going to take the rest of the night off of a board meeting, please exit quietly so we can continue our business.
Thank you all. We'll move on to communications and announcements. Do we have a report on the Legislative Education Network of DuPage?
Yes. One second.
You know what? I'll come back to you. Take your time.
Feel free to reach out to me.
Go to the next person, and then I'll find my next.
Joanna, do you have a report on the school association? Can we hear some quiet, please? Joanna, do you have a report on the School Association for Special Education in DuPage County? Joanna?
Sassy. Oh, Sassy. Sorry, I didn't hear you guys.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry. Actually, I don't really have a report tonight, other than we just have continued personnel issues and inability to staff classes. That's probably the only thing for right now.
Okay, thank you. Jenny, did you want to talk about the Legislative Education Network of DuPage?
The Lend meeting for October was held on October 29th to account for the veto session, which ended at midnight on Thursday, October 28th. The primary topic was House Bill 2778, which refers to school employee benefit and wage protection provisions. This is a COVID administrative leave bill, which did pass. The Lend members view this as a negative and anticipate that this will contribute to an already-existing staff shortage. The bill mostly allows for unlimited administrative leave for COVID-related issues. The bill may also impact contractual arrangements that districts have in place with their staff. It allows for paid time off for unvaccinated individuals and their children. The Lend network did push back, and the governor intends to veto it. The result is likely that the 60 days will pass, the governor will veto, and then there will be an override vote in January, which presently does have the numbers to pass. The IASB opposed this as there is no sunset date, among other things, and they need a definitive end date from the IDPH. While the bill appears to only apply in pandemic or emergency authorization times, it doesn't specifically read that way. There's also an e-learning provision that would require further costs to the districts. The bill requires districts to return all sick days used for COVID during the 2021, 2021, 2022 school year to employees. They next move to a discussion on snow days becoming remote learning days. One of the negatives surrounding that would be that districts would still be required to pay all subcontractors, such as bus drivers, cafeteria staff, et cetera, for those days. Then, they visited House Bill 1975, which is Faith's Law, which did pass. That bill focuses on grooming in schools. Faith's Law will define a person's sexual conduct with a student while holding a position of trust, authority, or supervision as aggravated sexual abuse. There will be an accompanying ISBE resource guide. This bill will prevent someone who is terminated in one state for such reasons from seeking employment in another state. This is commonly referred to as passing the trap. There is an accompanying trailer bill, which provides that a student may disclose mitigating factors, such as the student's status as a parent, expectant parent, or victim of domestic or sexual violence, in suspension or expulsion hearings. They then moved on to a discussion about congressional maps. They noted that Shaun Caston and Marie Newman are no longer in a consolidated district. That district is now Marie Newman and Chewie Garcia. They also discussed that teacher evaluation flexibility continues for the next school year, and then they are looking ahead to January, again addressing the bus driver shortage, which is somewhat frustrating, because if they aren't going to address it until January, it's probably not going to take effect in a meaningful time. We would like to see districts with grades nine through 12 allow buses or vehicles owned by the district that hold 10 people or less to be driven by staff members with just ISBE approval without a CDL license. This is something that... This is something that we could do with ISBE approval. Larger vehicles that hold 11 to 15 people would require legislative change. So that was most of that meeting, and then they announced that their annual breakfast was postponed to November of 2022.
And just a note about that last transportation bill. LEND did recognize the fact that District 99 is actively working on getting legislation adopted and passed. Senator Kern has that legislation written, and I've helped him, his office and his staff, put that together, as well as with our administrative team here. We're also in conversation with Representative Stava Murray on trying to support that and move it to the House concurrently with the Senate once they get back to work in the next legislative session. So more to come on that, but we're actively working on that, and LEND is supporting us a great deal on that work.
Thank you both. Terry, the foundation?
Yeah, really, I don't have a whole lot, just our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, so there'll be more to report after that. But hopefully you all got your fall donation letter, and I hope that, no, you didn't get one?
It's in the mail, maybe, hopefully. If not, the website has information on it.
We'll get you one.
I have no doubt.
It's okay. But I would like to see the board support the foundation by even making a small donation that tells the community that you're behind the foundation. So I will be sure and get you each a letter, and like I said, even a small donation just says that you're backing the foundation. And then we're also working on an event for the spring at North, and I think a lot of it has to do with the North calendar, and they're going to get with North to find out when the best date for that would be. And so you'll get more info on that. So those are my two things, and I'm just pleading, please donate to the foundation.
Thanks, Terry.
And I just want to say thank you so much for the nothing but cake. It's really a fun eat experience, so thank you very much.
It's a lot of work in exchange for a couple of small cakes.
It would have been more helpful to have four instead of three, though, because it's just Shelley and I at home now, so we'll be fighting over one of them.
No, you can share.
I guess we could do that, couldn't we?
Chris, any update on the report on all my association of school boards?
Well, we've got the conference on this weekend for the resolutions to come up, so those are still, so we'll still be voting on those. I did want to go around just one more time and get like a quick straw poll from board members to see how we feel about Resolution 2 and 15 that we discussed at the last meeting. So I don't know if, I know Nancy, you had some comments about those resolutions last time. Any changes, any suggestions for those?
The straw poll, I believe, at the end, at the last board meeting, was in support of your recommendation.
Right. Which was not to support 2, but the majority of the board supported 15.
Right, correct.
I have no idea what that was.
Yeah, we can go back to the minutes and confirm that before Saturday for you, Chris, and we'll send you the results of the straw poll from last week, last month, just so you're clear as you go into that meeting.
We just got an email today about the conference, and I've already downloaded the app. It's pretty helpful, so you might want to do that.
Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't hear a word you said.
I'm sorry. There's a conference app that I've used it every year that they've had it, and it's pretty helpful. And there's a link to it, or there's information about it, I think, on the email we got today, but it's, all you have to do is go to your Google Play Store and enter in ILJOC21, I think. And if you search that, it'll come, it'll take you right to the link, and you download it. It's got the whole schedule on your phone that way. Makes it easy.
You should have received an email today with information. That's what Mike's referencing. If you didn't, let us know, and Julie or I can forward you that information, get you set up.
Okay.
Is that it for reports?
I believe so.
My recommendation to the board is that we skip the December 6th workshop meeting. December's the month where we have back-to-back meetings scheduled. We don't have agenda items that we feel where we need to put two board meetings in December, so we recommend narrowing it down to just one board, our regular board meeting and skip our board workshop.
I don't know, Hank, I don't know if I could live with just one meeting in December.
I know.
How do you all feel?
We have all turned to plans.
So we'll update that schedule, but then we'll meet on December 13th. Location to be determined. That might be a challenging meeting to host in a large space, as we're in that time of the school year where there is a lot of student events. So we'll have to see where we can host that and how many people we can accommodate at that meeting. Before we go into closed session, I have one more comment to make, and that is a thank you to the Downers Grove Police and to our security staff and to our administrative team for ensuring that we had a safe and orderly environment this evening. You know, I know that things can be contentious, but the most important thing is safety, and that our students felt safe and our visitors felt safe here this evening. So I greatly appreciate the amount of effort and collaboration that the Downers Grove Police offer on all kinds of matters, but they really, they're really dedicated to making sure that everybody felt comfortable this evening, and we appreciate their assistance and dedication to District 99. Thank you. With that, we need to go into closed session.
Okay, so we need to motion to go into closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the district, or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the district has been filed and is pending before a court of administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Chris?
Chris for second.
Chris, Mike and Chris.
Thank you. Mike, Devin Port.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. We are going into closed session. We will not be taking any action when we come out of closed session, so to everyone else, we'll say goodnight.
We'll just come out to adjourn.